We're gonna come up and get us on the other side.
We'll call this council revenue session to order. It's Wednesday, June first, and time is seven P M. Do you join me in the board of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go ahead and open it up for visitor comments. If you'd like to come up and make comment, please keep it to five minutes or less. State your name for record.
Tina Curry. I just wanted to give you a quick update on what's going on. The thirteen nine starts tomorrow as John had mentioned in the Mr. Walsh mentioned in that earlier session. And Curtis Algado will be playing. We've had lots of people calling and messaging and seem excited about it, so I think we'll have a really good turnout. We have a lot of vendors that are participating, so let people know that. There are cards when you exit if you want to have it. So that if people ask you, you would have a rundown of who's playing or whatever. You could maybe take a picture with your phone. And then the vending machine is installed and running over by the dark market. So that people can now shop for wonderful souvenirs twenty-four hours a day. And an update on the boat, we made all of the seat selections. And the, a few of the other things they're sending us, choices as we go along. We're going to put the city logo on it, and he said it's, it's on track right now, so it's looking good. And I also was reading on his Facebook page that Lake Oswego bought three boats from him. And Lake Shalane and, I mean, they're really shipping stuff all over the world as far as North America goes. So I'm confident that he's on track and gonna be on time, and they'll do everything they can according to getting all the new parts and all the new gear re- retrofitted on the, on the main boat. But I thought we definitely should have city logo on the, you know, after they paint it and everything, so. Any questions?
What time is Mr. Salgado trying to fire up his booze?
Six o'clock.
Six?
Yeah, he made a lovely announcement on his Facebook page, so we have a ton, a ton of,
So we embed by eight.
A ton of people. And then next week, just so you know, the St. Helens Jazz Band will be playing with, and they are award-winning, first I hear. And they will be playing with Gabriel Cox. And hopefully the weather will be a balmy eighty degrees.
You can trust.
Thank you.
The tram go by on Gabriel yesterday. I was looking out the window of my office, I was like, what the heck?
We're getting our, look, everything dialed down so that it'll be ready to roll when we want it to. Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Other visitor comments?
Oh. The camera. And roll my bowl spot.
Did you go back and watch the video?
I, I noticed mine as well.
And zoomed right in on it. This is what I said. Good afternoon. Again, my name's Jim Coleman, and I'm here to testify or give you some public input again on the boat purchase. I have been in the commercial fishing business all my life. And during the last fifteen years, I spent a lot of time testifying in front of the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, so I'm a little bit accustomed to procedures. So last May eighteenth, I attended a meeting. It was on the agenda specified for public input on the boat purchase. I came to that. And I testified. And a friend of mine kind of put me up to it. He's a commercial fisherman out of Kodiak for forty years, and I was telling him about St. Helens buying a boat in Florida, and he says, well, Jim, he says, it's your public duty to go down there and testify and explain to him that you don't buy a boat without a survey. And so I came down. And the next day, he called me up. He said, well, how'd it go? I said, it went great. I said, I testified that every one of you commissioners agreed with me that the boat should have a survey done before purchase. I believe, maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but that's what I went home understanding after that meeting. That there would be a survey before purchase. That's how that meeting ended. I didn't know there was another meeting on the boat purchase. And later that day or that evening, you opened it back up to boat purchase discussion. And during that discussion, Tina was able to get up and explain a lot of her understanding of how the boat purchase was gonna go. But there was the survey has to be done before the purchase. If you got an idea of the value compared to, this guy wants two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the survey may say, great, buy, buy it, or you might come back to, you know, I think it's a piece of crap. I understand that there's repairs to be done. She explained all that, and uh, but, so I went back and went to YouTube videos and watched that meeting. And then Mr. Morton made a motion for the boat purchase. Mention of the survey in his motion. It was a motion for the survey. And there's a lot of discussion about the survey and the C O I. And Tina kept referring to the C O I. We got a C O I, we got a C O I, we're good. Well, let me read a paragraph out of Mr. Walsh gave me a copy of this paperwork. And let me, I'll read through it and I'll explain it a little bit. This is from the seller in the city of St. Helens. This is consideration of a firm outline of known work and cost, which I will supply for two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars U S D. And is to include a full inspection for practical reinstatement of the C O I as performed by U S Coast Guard Secretary Jacksonville to achieve the restoration of existing restrictions found in the previous C O I. Understanding that a final inspection for actual reinstatement of the C O I must be done locally in Oregon by owner after receiving the vessel. Total lead time for work to be performed estimated ten to twelve weeks. So what did that paragraph just tell us? That the C O I that was performed on that boat by Secretary Jacksonville, that boat failed that C O I. So saying that there's a C O I that makes it great is actually a failed C O I. And it won't be a passed C O I, a certification to haul passengers till you have spent your two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and the boat is in Portland, Oregon, and U, U S Coast Guard Portland will do that inspection. Says right there. Understanding that the final inspection for actual reinstatement of C O I must be done locally in Oregon. The money is gone. You spent it. The boat's here. Coast Guard might say, that's great. Might get three guys with a clipboard and say, we got problems. So congratulations on buying a boat in Florida, sight unseen, on survey. I think there was confusion in the council members on, we're getting one, we're not getting one. What passed your motion was sign the contract. That's what happened. And a hundred thousand dollars went to Florida. Process has begun. They're gonna want another hundred thousand. They're short. Anyway, just, I thought I'd bring you up to speed on what I've been following on this.
Tina, you mentioned the fact that the survey would be done in Oregon. Is that correct? You just read that?
I didn't know. The inspection, the Coast Guard certification will be done in Portland, Oregon.
Yes.
The, the St. Helens city survey is not on the agenda anywhere.
So we, we have time for a survey. And we should have it.
Send him a hundred grand.
What?
You sent him a hundred grand.
Yeah, okay. So we have, we have time for a survey here for our insurance purposes. We need to get a survey for insurance. Buying it is another issue.
Well.
So, but we will get a survey for insurance.
I mean, what's the value? What, what if, what if you bought? You don't know. I mean, you're buying a boat in Florida, sight unseen.
Go ahead, Councilor Berkeley.
Our draft minutes for May eighteenth, I mean, our discussion. Um, I think we, and this is the understanding I came away with, that even though the requirement of a marine survey was not part of the motion, my understanding is that, and this is that we should, that they should approve it with the condition that the survey be done before it is purchased and when it arrives. So when I voted, I made up the vote. I, it was on motion, but I want to explain that my understanding was that we had given a clear direction that we wanted a survey done.
But it has been surveyed. It didn't pass. No, it, it has been surveyed or saying it didn't pass. So it technically.
That's not a survey. It's a Coast Guard inspection. Survey and Coast Guard inspection or future inspection.
So we, we will get a survey on it when it's here. For insurance.
You're out two hundred and fifty grand. You might have bought a piece of junk. I won't.
Yeah.
I'd love the best thing in the world. Man, you got the best deal in the world.
Neither do I.
But you, a normal boat transaction, Mr. Walsh just bought a boat. Did you do a survey on yours before you bought it?
Are the insurance and financing yes?
You should have done. And yeah, I think you got a little, I think that I think the tourist director was hell bent to get this done because she's in a hurry to get it here by August, and she kind of doused around the, the subject. She even said, when you guys were having your negotiations on the motion, she told you that it in fact had a survey, and she could get it from them for the phone call tomorrow, so it should be in your inbox. It's been two weeks. It had, she said it had a survey. So click of the mouse, that survey could be here if there is, that's, that was one, one of the things that she said that I'm, has a survey?
Do you have any surveyors in mind?
I could go online and look up Jacksonville, Florida and find you on by noon tomorrow.
Tina is indicating that there is a survey. So is it, is it proper to?
You can't take a cert, there was conversation that the seller would provide you that information. You don't get that from the seller. You get, it's an independent city of St. Helens survey.
Um, so a question for you on the Coast Guard inspection. Is it typical that they, you get re-inspected when they come from a different state or?
This boat has, is not, has, does not have a past, a a past cert, or past inspection on it. It, it, it has a failed inspection on it right now. They did an inspection. It failed. It's out of service because it can't haul passengers. When it, and they gave a list of things that they saw wrong, and this guy's saying he's gonna fix them. That's good.
Yes.
But to answer your question, that boat qualifies as a thirty-passenger boat to be inspected annually. To be cert, get annual certification because of the thirty passengers. There's a break, six people. About six people, you fall into that every year. So they can't, Jacksonville can't say, well, it's good for Oregon. It's gotta be eyes on in Oregon to get that inspection.
Thank you for answering that.
All right. But anyway, I uh.
I know you, I respect.
Well.
What you've done.
I, I appreciated you guys listening to me when I came to the public testimony. I don't know what kind of program you guys are running here, but when I go to fish meetings and there's an agenda item, and Jim Coleman shows up for that agenda item and I speak, there's a, that agenda item's done.
Yeah, so it was.
It's closed down.
So typically, Jim, a lot of our public hearings, like, will have be prior to have a deliberation in, in this session that we're in right now. So like, a lot of times we'll have a five, forty.
Yeah, but that's deliberation between this, not public.
So we have a public meeting where we have public insight and we kind of have a
You had a specific public meeting.
Vote on it, our decision as a council. So then.
If you had a public meeting on the agenda for boat purchase.
Yeah, we don't.
I participated in that.
Yes.
Nobody else, not very many people did.
Yes.
Then your next one is deliberation.
Yes.
Yeah, always.
You allowed public input in your deliberations.
Well, we have a public comment and that's.
Yeah, another, another public comment.
In my, in my world, they would have said, that's not on the agenda. That's already.
I wish we could do that sometimes.
Well, you can.
Three, like, three different.
I appreciate you. I'm way over time.
Yeah, yeah.
You bought a boat. You could be in trouble. You could have bought the best boat in the world.
We bought the best boat in the world.
I didn't say that.
We're gonna survey. We're gonna survey so that we have a price on, for the insurance, what its value is.
If it was me today, I, I would hire a surveyor tomorrow, and I would put him with that buyer down there, and you are my rep to watch this work get done. And report back to you. And if I cost you a grand, might cost you five hundred.
So we bought the best boat in the world, and maybe we can get you to fill in every month while as a captain.
No. Certification's already expired.
Okay.
We do, we do. Thank you. Thanks for listening to me.
Okay, any other visitor comments?
I think Mr. Coleman has a lot to learn about public process and how you guys operate. But regardless of that, yeah, Tina, boat been surveyed. It's been done. I think you guys did everything proper. I'm glad the boat's coming. I think that it's not gonna be a problem. But my bigger concern is that your discussion today, number one, about the waterfront and about the money that had been loaned to the city that is supposedly, hopefully sitting somewhere in your bank account, but which you're paying lots of money in interest on for both the waterfront development and for the police station. And based upon part of the discussion that I was able to watch today, I think that the city budget is in not good shape. And I think that that money, which is close to thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty million.
I mean, thirty million, yes, sitting there is a lot of money. And I think you need to pay that money back, and those projects need to be delayed. Literally, the police station, you could do, get by with a lot less than the fourteen million that you borrowed, and it's gonna cost you more than that. And I think it's not the time, considering that you are in crisis situation in two years as far as your reserves and the utility bill. You need to solve those problems rather than stick your head in the sand and pretend like it's just gonna go away in two years, that you have a lot of time. You don't have a lot of time. You have a very limited amount of time, and to get the city into more debt for that police station at this time doesn't make any sense to me. And, and that we're paying interest on a building that we haven't even started. And I, I think you need to get enough data cost because I think that the fourteen million is probably a drop in the bucket based on what things are costing nowadays. In addition, you now have no developer for the waterfront. I don't see any signs that you're gonna have a developer for waterfront. And spending fourteen million dollars, again, over fourteen million, I think that one is fifteen point something. Um, um, road improvements, literally for a road that will go nowhere. The developer needs to be picked. And I, I, I'm for the waterfront. I think it looks great. I like your plan. I am not against the waterfront. I am against police station. But I, I think they need storage on a new Taj Mahal police station, but the waterfront, I love the idea, but you need to have a developer. I mean, you need, that, you know, that's step one. And, and why build infrastructure for a road that goes nowhere when you don't have a developer? So, and I, I understand that you had hoped to have a developer, and that that did not go how you had planned in the negotiations. I don't blame you for that. You did, you did what you were supposed to do, but it did not work out. But to me, you have dumped the gun and borrowed money for two projects that I think we cannot afford. And we're paying, and, and just from the police station, we have an eight hundred thousand dollar hole in our budget from the cannabis money that we can't pay just on interest. And so to me, it is really time to rethink both of those projects and verify that the money is there. Because my big concern is you have a finance director that has accused your tourism director basically in public of basically taking money. And usually when people accuse them, they, they might have done some of something themselves that are kind of shady, and I'd like, I'd like to have an outside audit. It is all of your fiduciary responsibilities to verify that money is there. And I'd like to know and verify that that money is there and that it's sitting there and it's not been in, in other places. And then if it is, I think you need to rethink those, both of those decisions about how you're gonna move forward with them and what you're going to do with that, both of those projects, and whether or not the city can actually afford them. Thank you.
Mr. Prehime, you took note of, I made a statement that I don't know what I'm talking about or I don't know public process. Could you sit down and explain to them what I did wrong?
You didn't seem to understand that, that what the process of having a city council works, which is.
I asked? Okay, I'll see. I just forget to call people on my name.
So, so a couple of things I'll just respond to is that we actually have, I think, our, our waterfront is point six percent. And we have talked about diversifying that right now. It's not really standard practice to do that, but to reinvest because interest rates are going up pretty, and actually make money off of it. And then.
Well, the waterfront funds are, are at the state. They're, we're not in our city accounts.
Okay.
Yep, and it's a, it's a.
It's one of the other.
Reimbursement.
Yes.
Pay only point six interest on the funds we use.
Well, what were we talking about, the investments in?
Police, public safety.
Public safety would actually be invested in secure investments. So this, we are thinking about that. We talked about our twenty percent cushion for the because we're there to be at thirty, we're at close to the twenty for recession. We, we are definitely, that is on the forefront of our mind. Just wanna make sure that we are clear on that part of it. We have ordered, actually had a discussion on, are you giving me a new auditor? Um, at random because we've been doing standard, the same ones over and over again, so we are actually in the process of that too, of now in our F D E for that. So that answers your questions.
F D E, but we all are having an audit done. We always have an audit annually so that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it is done. Okay, it's being done.
Exactly. Okay, any other visitor comments here? And then, is there any online? Okay.
I want to clarify one thing for Mr. Coleman, that the city council meetings deliberation is amongst us. Public forum, which we had on the boat, is about the public and deliberation with the public and answering questions at that time. But once we move to council, deliberation is here.
Yeah, it no, no longer has public input involved in it.
Well, public input in five minutes.
We listen and then we make a decision on your behalf.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. But that particular subject had a specific meeting set up earmarked on the agenda for Congress, public input on the boat.
We don't vote in those meetings. We don't vote in those meetings.
They typically do. Like, we'll have, for example, Vacation of the Seventh Street Right-Away had its own public hearing, and it's on its final reading tonight. And I'm gonna abstain because I didn't actually, and I don't think I abstained on the first screen. Did I?
You didn't have to. You didn't have to.
Okay, but I didn't attend the meeting, so doesn't matter. I know a lot about it. But so for example, yes.
I'm wrong, Mr. Prehime, always.
I do have. Okay. Um, I think that was just trying to think up, oh, you know.
I understand.
Yeah. Okay, so on the final reading, ordinance number three, an ordinance vacating a portion of Seventh Street and South Sixteenth, right away.
I move we adopt ordinance number thirty-two eighty-three is read.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve ordinance three-two-eight-three. Any discussion? Okay, Council President Morton.
Hi.
Councilor Topaz.
Hi.
Councilor Chilton.
Hi.
Councilor Berkeley.
Hi.
And I'm not as well. Order number three-two-eight-four, ordinance amending the St. Helens municipal code of heading thirteen relating to definitions of equivalent dwelling units for wastewater and water utility services.
Um, excuse me, on that last one, you said you were gonna abstain.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sounds like it. Yep.
I move we adopt ordinance number thirty-two eighty-four is read.
Second.
Kathy, cause I was asked, because I didn't, it wasn't in the public hearing, and I know couldn't run that meeting publicly today about it, because that Seventh Street is not Seventh Street. It's near Sixteenth Street. I remember.
Yeah, yeah, it's a.
Okay, you made a motion.
My second.
And. Jessica seconded that. Okay, I'm an order, uh, motion has been made and seconded to approve ordinance three-two-eight-four, Council President Morton.
Hi.
Councilor Topaz.
Hi.
Thank you, Chilton.
Hi.
Councilor Berkeley.
Hi.
And I'm a high as well. Ordinance first reading, ordinance three-two-eight-five, an ordinance amending the St. Helens municipal code section eight point two-eight regarding use of the city docks. Resolution number nineteen fifty-six, a resolution amending the city of St. Helens system development charges for water, wastewater, stormwater, and transportation.
I, I move we adopt resolution number nineteen fifty-six is read.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution nineteen fifty-six. Discussion.
I will vote for these. I would have preferred that at the late. But public comment input, I guess frankly, to be honest, I don't know what would have, or would have been said by anyone to persuade me to change my mind because I didn't think it is essential that we do these things, so I will.
And I would like to apologize earlier for my, and like, you know, the boisterousness because I felt the same way as, as, as you do. So, and you said it in a much calmer way. So, I appreciate that.
Well, I'll comment on that too, and just that it's a big, it's a big thing that's gonna happen, so I'm gonna make sure that it can get through early. But I also believe that we've kicked the can down the roof enough, and it's something that needs to happen.
You have a comment? Well. All right, Council President Morton.
Hi.
Councilor Topaz.
Hi.
Councilor Chilton.
Hi.
Councilor Berkeley.
Hi.
And I'm a high as well. Resolution nineteen fifty-seven, a resolution to establish water sewer, storm drainage, utility rates, charges, and administrative rules.
I move we adopt resolution number nineteen fifty-seven is read. Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution nineteen fifty-seven. Okay, go ahead, discussion.
Yeah, so again, just the same comment as I had for the prior.
Hey, uh, any other discussion? All right, Council President Morton.
Hi.
Councilor Topaz.
Hi.
Councilor Chilton. Councilor Berkeley. And I'm a high as well. Proven authorized for signature, six, extension contract with C B M Systems LLC for janitorial services. Seven, amendment to agreement with More Power Technology Group for I T services. Eight, Mall Foster and Long Beach work order operation for central waterfront scope one B. And nine, agreement with Keller Associates Inc. for engineering consulting services as it pertains to sanitary sewer, water, and stormwater systems.
Move we adopt unauthorized for signature, item six, seven, eight, nine, as read.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve authorized for signature, six, three, nine, Council President Morton.
I've got a comment.
Comment as well.
Discussion.
On Mall Foster, they have a number of tests that they've laid out. They also have forgotten to repeat in these new places, these new boreholes, ones that they've done before. While they have a lot of very fancy While they have a lot of very fancy uh tests laid out. Basically, the first group, which is under uh groundwater sampling is a standard package done in laboratory. Take a sample, run home with it and you test it. They did forget a few of the really nasty uh. Compounds that will probably be in there because our fire department, once upon a time, had some of the old foam chemicals. Which are not nice and they would have been dumped or could have been dumped into the sewer system and may be there. Now, there's another group of tests that were done in the last group, which are called field tests. Because they have to be done at the hole, like the temperature, pH, gas concentrations. Uh, turbidity, con- uh conductivity of the fluid and bacterial screen. Uh, one of the problems and the other thing that was not done before was record what time the tests were made and what river level for. Now, we know that once upon a time when we built the lagoon. The uh levee half of it was covered with membrane, the cliff half was not. But the membrane did float and had to be breached, so this gas being generated underneath that. And what it is, we better find out. The other thing is since we're cutting a hole in the bottom of that, we should be able to get a sample of the plastic. Membrane and that will be retrieved and analyzed. It will tell us a lot about the chemistry of the ground, how. Change the material has been. Uh, things that we better check on, which would be new would be methane, sulfur dioxide, radon. Uh, that would have to be done in the field and that is not in the contract.
What's your suggestion?
That it they be done. Those are, I wouldn't call them standard tests. They are done. Uh, the ones they've talked about that they're contracting for, you can pour the stuff in the jar, go home and have the laboratory do it. This would have to be done on site. But the gases, since we have had experience with it. Floating it and the fact that there's so much funny junk down there and what the bacteria are creating, we could have some very. Upsetting gases. One of the possible gases is we either not as cyanide, those bugs do funny things to old chemistry.
Well, I think even just the pulping process, because I'm familiar with the old pulping process. I haven't heard of the the liner floating in years, in years. So you you should really check your testimony on that, even where you're getting your information from. I think the pulping process and the breaking down of wood products, like when I can speak on behalf that I do know about. Is when organic material my yard debris starts to break down, it's lifting off the gas. I imagine that wood fiber pulp does the same thing as it. As it actually decomposes, it lifts off a gas, because I have not heard of that liner floating in years.
The fact that it did float once and right now it's remember it's breached. It's breached, so it's any gas being generated would be.
Turn back in the pulpy days.
The point is that the gas that will be generated now and you're coming up and going through the holes and escaping.
And what I'm having a hard time with is is um mall foster is actually the people who do this and. We have a counselor who's an expert in this area.
Well, in fact, believe it or not, I am, Rick. Wait, wait, hold it, hold it, hold it.
I'm just trying to pass it.
No, wait, oh, Rick, 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 well, tell me when I didn't do biologic studies on.
Approved and authorized.
Well, I'm trying to tell you about a problem or a possible problem and you just told everybody no nothing about it. I wrote the papers about this.
I said you were an expert.
Well, remember that. Now, listen to what the expert has to say.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to pass unauthorized a signature for mall foster who is actually. A company, a very reputable company that has done many of these projects.
Well, this has to, this has to be done, okay, so let now hold it.
That is to be done.
Let me talk. This has to be done. Let's get this done and that will give you enough time to ask for additional information. But let's get this done as the during as the res- resolution states. We can make another resolution for what you have to say. It doesn't have to hold all of this up.
Okay, okay, the reason I should hold this up is this test has to be done exactly at the same time, not done later. Now, we have had physical evidence that there's gas in there and we now know it's coming out. And some of this stuff is a lot longer than our lifetime. We've seen that before. If you have cyanide, sulfur dioxide coming up into your buildings after you fill this thing in, you've got buildings that are no good. Mall Foster, in their first test, a number of these tests that I'm asking for, and all of a sudden they've deleted them. The temperature is a big one, by the way. It says something very active is happening down there. And we better find out if it matches the last test.
Is it possible for someone who is going to be handling this situation with mall foster and and the continuation of this contract with them for this project? To communicate with Mr. Topaz so that his concerns are talked about with someone who knows.
It's our wastewater. It's our wastewater that do D Q is involved. Rachel did discuss this earlier in our work session.
The scope of work, which is one part of a permitting pathway, getting. Transition of our lagoon into a facility that can receive material regardless of what it is, it has to be approved by D Q. And D Q has been part of the discussion and part of the development of the scope of work and tasks that we need to do to get to the that are the right pathway.
But the one problem will happen if you forget the tests that mall foster did the first time and don't repeat them. Basically, this has to be redone with the original data because it has to be taken at the same time. That makes it legal data. Just can't do this and then go do that and then do the and say all these tests are the same test. Time and and these aren't cheap tests, if you would, because they take special equipment on the barge to do it.
Have you spoke to Rachel about this?
No, I haven't. I wasn't even informed that she was uh negotiating with them for this. I don't think Rachel has read the uh mall foster test.
Sounds like it's the D E Q.
They want to, they have, I have not seen the final D E Q report. We sent them the mall foster report, we sent them a critique, they sent some questions back. It had to be done. Mall Foster did that. I have not seen the re- the final report after that.
Okay, uh.
When you read the report.
When you're done, you pass your time to Council Berkeley because I don't want to interrupt you.
Well, go ahead. But we've got some very serious chemistry going on and some of this biologic stuff I've been doing since nineteen sixty. So you're given the the flip of the hand like I don't know what I'm talking about.
I'm not good. I'm not. I'm I'm frustrated because we have a proven authorized for signature. Uh, the very reputable company that we were trying to authorize and was discussed earlier in our work session and Rachel Berry said that. And you asked about the E Q, a few questions about the E Q and getting the information and at that point in time, that was okay. And now tonight it has turned into this and we're just trying to approve. And I asked you actually. You passed it, are you done?
Go for it, but I would disagree with the reputable, so.
I just, so I. On the same, I'm. I believe. I believe that this uh work order authorization was developed by staff. That would have included our, who who it included Mohammed Zahir or who. This this work plan has been in place for the several, many, many years.
And sure.
And it's been part of a process, you know, working with. The staff at D Q and our consultants that understand it a lot better than in place to our staff. So here to come up with this pathway of how do we get through this permitting process and they've helped us.
So they, right.
Lay out this roadmap.
And I, and I understand that we do have, but we do have staff who are aware of all this and if they had any s- serious concerns, they would have brought it. To attend to attention.
Yes.
Yeah, it to to our attention. Patrick, can I ask one question of you on the ability of our staff? Have any of them done any research in this area?
I have.
Written any papers on it?
Council Topaz, I have no idea.
I have, that's why I questioned.
Okay, then, and I respect your your. Your your ex- expertise and your related talk on it, but I believe that um. Not um sufficient for us to not move forward.
Yeah. Okay, so any other discussion on these six three nine? I'm not hearing any um. Council President Morton.
Hi.
Council Topaz.
Hi.
Council Shelton.
Hi.
Council Berkeley. And I'm not as well. Consent agenda for approval in the work session, executive session, public hearing, public forum, regular session meeting stated May fourth, twenty twenty two. Council special session meeting stated May eleven, twenty twenty two. Council work session, public hearing, special session and regular session meeting is May eighteen, twenty twenty two. Eleven amended finance director job description and twelve accounts payable list.
I move we uh adopt consent agenda for approval, uh items ten, eleven and twelve is read.
Second. Okay, motion been made and seconded to uh prove consent agenda for approval table eleven as well, we've discussed it. Council President Morton.
Hi.
Okay.
Hi.
Council Topaz. Council Shelton.
Hi.
Council Berkeley.
Hi.
And I am an I as well. Okay, we didn't have any work session items really. We we actually head out on the boat though. Open it up that county. Uh, council member reports, uh, Council President Morton.
Yeah, uh, one thing the parks commission is doing, uh, is accomplishing a uh work party. At the Botanical Gardens uh this Saturday at uh. Nine thirty, I believe, is when they're meeting and now work for about an hour and a half or so. Uh, Mr. Belcher align things out uh for the work party and uh. Mr. Morton and Mr. Belcher will be buying a whole lot of pizza for our working table. And uh, uh, on testimony, uh, Mr. Coleman's testimony. I do believe that when the, when the boat gets here, that there are uh very competent uh. Surveyors in the area that will give us a value on the boat. And will list any kinds of items that they see that would need repair. At that, at that time. I do think that that is necessary for our insurance and I uh. I hope that uh, I hope that Tina goes forward with that. That would be out of her funds, I believe. That's it.
Council Topaz.
Okay. Um, as we know, we've had kind of a funny pickup in our waterfront development. And one of the comments that has been made is we haven't really got our act together, which I agree. And I think we really have to look hard at our master plan. And there's a number of things that have to fit together, not done piecemeal. And I'll give you an example. President Morton only complains about, we have a switchyard, we want to get rid of it. And he answers no and yes. The switchyard's definitely in the wrong place. But the switchyard is an absolutely big link in the conus of this area. So how do we plan and where will we put the switchyard? Well, it also brings up the fact that we've got to bring material in to this area for any number of reasons. And that means we have to bring in by truck, by train, by boat or by car. Well, the boat business or the shipping business says we need, at least in front of the mill area. A waterfront that we can work on and right now we know it's contaminated and can't use that strip of land, which is underwater. So how do we make sure that gets to be used? Now, D E Q has called that project one cleaning up or double checking project two, which is the ground for the mill also has to be done. Well, going back to the mill, we clean up. Uh, the industrial park on the mill, that means transportation and it means our connector plan, which. Includes everything from gable road, road theory, all the way to the waterfront should be really reexamined. Now, we have what should be on what we call the waterfront. We had a number of suggestions rather different than what we had proposed in the framework plan. And it's more in line with what our architects eight years ago said, you know, a little different flavor. And I think it's time we really had an overall master plan. What are we gonna do with the lagoon? What has to be done to make the lagoon something? What are we gonna do with the waterfront? What are we gonna do with the switchyard? What are we gonna do with the connector plant? Because all of these things make St. Helens. Doing one or two with it doesn't fit. We know the sewer plant won't meet specifications and can't be re-permitted under the new rules and that's gonna have, something's gotta be done with that. Another part of this master plan, and I think it's about time, we really put. A concerted effort into looking at all these problems in one. Time zone, if you would, and then going after it then, because doing a piece here and a piece there, we're gonna end up with disaster.
Several years ago, Council Topaz, um, this came up about the switching yards and uh. Senator Betsy Johnson uh got very involved in this and she was an advocate for moving that switching yard.
Not getting rid of it, moving it, moving it towards scap hoops. Exactly.
So with that, with that, she has been fairly active and she, here she is as was. As a person who oversaw state spending as chairman of the Ways and Means Committee. Uh, and so. I don't know where that's at at this point, but it did have traction at some point. She would report back to the cities in the city council uh sessions that we had. Uh, monthly, I believe, uh, every month we would rotate those to a different city. And uh Senator Johnson would attend those and give a report and it was very active for some time. Uh, where that's at, I'm not certain.
We definitely need a switchyard in this end of the state. We absolutely, that's.
It's out of our jurisdiction. I guess my point is that it was, it was moved to a state. And uh to a state level and working with the railroads at a national level. Uh, is something that even though that's that spur is owned locally. Uh, still, when you start talking about railroads, you're talking about uh. Not O dot rail, you're talking about U S rail. So uh, that's how she, that's she got involved in that and I'm not certain, I I've never talked to her personally of the follow up on that. But she was adamant about.
It it really is great and it's federal god almost when it comes to railroad. It really is a difficult. And somehow we've got to either relight it or what or find it. Because the piece of ground with the switching yard is now is a waste for us.
My point is, is that if we put all these things together, as you're suggesting. Uh, it'd take forty years to figure everything out. I mean, at least. I mean, that isn't going to happen overnight, no way. I mean, she's been working on that for that amount of time and uh. She has a lot of impact in our state.
Hopefully more.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hey, as I say, some of these things are gonna take a lot of time and they're gonna involve a lot of the. It'd be nice to have a master plan. Is this what we would like? Who has to do it and what kind of hoops we have to go through is is, don't doubt a difficult thing, but I think we need a really large master plan. And it's not gonna get done right away and. It's but we're starting to step on ourselves, because when you look at some of these things, oh, this has to be done. That would helpful if that gets done and and it's getting to be a tangled web too, just one piece at a time without overall vision.
Anything else?
That's it.
Good, thank you.
Council Shelton. Counsel Shelton.
Um, I wanted to kind of go back to something that we addressed earlier today in the work session and make sure that um, you know, we give it the attention it deserves, so. I wanted to applaud the hard work and attention giving to come up, coming up with the solutions to address getting law enforcement to the island. And more aggressive proactive plan to enforce and keep the docks safe and clean. Um, for anyone who didn't tune in earlier, that plan looks like um Saint Helens PD getting trained. In partnership with the Sheriff's Department, so just shout out to both of them for coming together and trying to solve this problem. Um, and plans to, in place to address putting a harbor master at the docks as enforcement. I think we've made a lot of headway on that and it's been something that has been on our to do list for a little while, so I just wanna um. Put a shout out there to that because I think it's important for citizens to know that we are moving forward with that and. We've put a lot of thought and attention to it, so thank you to the staff that have been working on that and to the council for making it a priority for the citizens. Um, and then um. I wanted to do a little shout out for Memorial Day, just thank you to people that served um. And uh, people that had lost their lives or lost family members, I just wanna say we appreciate you and um. It was a good chance for us all to reflect and really think about um what it means to sacrifice, you know, your life for our country, so. That's important to um note and Thirteen Nights is coming up as we've talked about a few times. I plan on going to see Sweetwater, so I'll be there for that one, number favorite in town. And then the Kiwanis Parade is returning, so very excited for that and I think. The community is gonna be really excited to have something back, that's a tradition, so.
Counsel Percy.
Uh, not much, these things, um, I. Neglected last month. All attention that the month of uh, April is observed nationally as Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Fund. And um, I regret that I didn't uh. Say that at the time, now it's June, but I am glad that we as a community. I believe that we as a community are doing everything in uh that we can to make sure that we are accepting. Not just accepting, but welcoming. All individuals and celebrate their heritage of. With them. Uh, but today, June first is the first day of Pride Month. In which we recognize the contributions and struggles of our. Lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, gender and queer pride um. Individuals make up very uh, very important members of our community and again. Glad that we do have um, have made a statement as a city affirming uh the rights and welcomeness of all and that. Uh, there are times perhaps when we don't always, I can't point out the specific examples, but I believe that we as a. We'll always live up to our beliefs, but I do believe that, that we as a council. And our professional staff, the police department are always trying to make sure that we honor. And respect um all peoples, all individuals. The third thing is uh. Since I was hired at Columbia City School and I found out I have a job next year, hey.
Where you going?
It was a temporary contract, I guess they liked, liked what I did. Um, and I will be returning as a third grade, uh, third grade teacher next year. Uh, but since I've been there, I have been bound and determined to get my students on a walking field trip to Dalton Lake Nature Preserve. And through ups and downs where I think it's finally going to happen, the last week of school, we're going to take the fourth graders uh. Down to uh, down to Dalton Lake and um. And uh, have a great exploration, I actually think that at the, the school we've uh, we're trying to um. I believe make a, an effort to have our students, our school in some way committed to environmental protection and improvement. And even though Columbia City is a separate entity, uh, number of the students are Saint Helen's students and we wanna be good neighbors, so I'm looking forward to the. The future that this perhaps could be a start of involving Columbia City. Uh, more actively and particularly the school uh to continue to develop the uh, the treasure. Um, I can't invite any of you to, well, I could invite any of you to join us on the field trip as long as you go ahead and uh. Fill out a volunteer form, application with the Saint Helen's uh, school district, but uh. We do have, we do have members of the Parks and Recreation Commission, Lynn Pettit, who are going to be participating, I think Carmen, Carmen Dunn as well to. To help serve as, as guides and things and um. I, I'm going to, I need to contact Chief Greenway uh and make an exploration to just make sure that we make a sweep so that there are. No un, unwell, unexpected visitors or campers at Dalton Lake during, during that time. But uh, anyway, looking forward to that and I can, so I can report to you on the fifteenth about uh, how that went, so there we go.
Okay, counsel.
Because you, you need to finish it up.
Go ahead, yes, yes.
Just a little go back and uh, it's regarding a survey. And a survey, the survey is important for a value to the boat. But more importantly, it's a, it's also a. A total stamp that the work had been done on the repairs that were to be done in Florida. And that that work was successfully finished and so that's why I say that a survey here. Is, 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 is important and I went for the value. And the next uh, for the work that is being accomplished is done appropriately. So, and surveys are, are, are not expensive. I would think, uh, let's see, when I got my boat survey. Uh, it was like four hundred, four hundred fifty dollars for a, like a six page report. And so uh, they're not expensive and well worth the money. So uh. I just wanted to reiterate that, how important that is.
What happened if we failed the survey?
There's no such thing as failing a survey.
No, it's the.
They will tell you exactly what needs to be done to fix such and such problem or whatever.
So I would say that uh, now on that, if it were like a month and a half ago, I would be volunteering to go to Florida. To watch.
All expenses paid.
To watch the boat, he's worked on. Um, so last night, uh, Main Street was really good, Main Street at the movie theater, uh. The uh, Main Street grant that was given to them, uh, man, what a wonderful job on that, the uh. The bathrooms, the handicap accessibility for, you walk in totally different, the doors kind of face in and there's a flat spot with two chairs and I was like, what's that all about? Oh, that's ADA, I was like, oh, whoa, very cool. Um, seats are very deluxe, the rows are five foot apart, so you do not have to worry about going to the center, you, you don't feel like you're. Burning somebody if you gotta get popcorn or go to the bathroom or anything like that. Um, just uh, very, very impressed with where the Main Street is going to. Um, our MOU definitely um is working and they are in the process of um. Union applications, I think it closes out on the fifteenth of this month, so you can spread the word if you think of anybody who's qualified to be a, um. We said we all would, a administrator for Main Street, um, have them apply. And so uh, yeah, I was just really impressed with all the work that um, we had done over there and uh. Really, they were very thankful, uh, it was cool to hear that, that they were thankful of our building inspector and uh. His thoughtfulness in ways of helping them adapt to the code in their. Little building and trying to bring it up to code is not, not an easy task, so kudos to Mike, Mariah. Um, I wanna thank this council for approving resolutions uh, nineteen fifty six and nineteen fifty seven. I immediately left here and seen Sharon outside actually coming back from her walk and. And she goes, I hope it passes because we have some work of these to be done and uh. And, and we did, we passed tonight, cause there is a lot of work that needs to be done. We have a long day's parade coming up, well, let's just go first, Thirteen Nights on the River tomorrow, looking forward to that, Chris Ilgato is always very entertaining, very engaged. Um, then we have the Kiwanis Day Parade, the eighteenth, um, I'll be driving the old truck. Pretty sure I'm gonna check, we have public works tomorrow, make sure that she's running. Very much I can go wrong with that, I don't, uh, no computer chips, no nothing like that. So, um, and then May, or June twenty fifth, I, I hope everybody, if you are having troubles. Please let me know or let Lisa know, um, any of your contact points for Citizens Day, uh, cause that's just right around the corner. So uh, we have our main sponsors that are all stepping up again this year, we have. At least, have we passed the deadline yet for vendors or is it still open?
Last I heard, there was only one spot left.
Really?
Uh, if any of our donors want a spot, we will make sure they have a spot, but I don't know that there's anymore. I think we're around fifty vendors.
Cool, cool, so.
We're bigger than last year, I think.
Yeah, uh, so we do need to get some generators or something, I know we have power issues over at the park that we're gonna look at next year. Um, I just understand there's some issues with power, so we'll get that all figured out. Uh, but yeah, so that is gonna be happening and it's just coming up, so if anybody has any issues between now and our next council meeting, maybe we just recap and. Uh, make sure we have all our ducks in order as a quick agenda item. Just to make sure, uh, I think Public Works is helping out, wanna give them a shout out for road closures and with the Kiwanis Day Parade. And uh, I wanna thank those guys for stepping up.
Lisa, did we follow up with our contacts that you gave us? And I've talked to the manager of Starbucks and uh, they seem to be on board, but I don't know.
I haven't followed up with them yet, I'll be doing that.
So you're going to follow up with, with people and.
Unless you were planning on it.
No, not really, but if, I didn't know, you know, because your phone number was on there to, to contact you and I don't know if they contacted you or not.
No, not that one.
I kicked the ball to Lisa, I was like, here you go.
Well, I didn't kick the ball, I did actually talk to Russ at Walmart, he actually is going to step up and donate even a little bit more this year. But I told him that you'd be in contact because it's more condiments and stuff like that, I didn't know what you needed, but.
Yeah.
I told him that Safeway really stepped up, thousand dollars in chips, cookies, right?
Yes.
Uh, IGA is five hundred hamburgers, five hundred hot dogs, buns, the whole works included, the city of Saint Helens is doing half of that. They are doing the other half of the cost of that. Uh, Sunshine Pizza is going to cater for us. No cost, but they also will help out with their salads usually, so.
Restaurant outlet's gonna provide stuff for the volunteers, snacks and drinks.
So I'm looking forward to this and, you know, I hopefully, we have the sand pile set up, have you been talking about the sand pile?
I haven't heard.
It's always a really good little, little trinkets, we, we put little silver dollars in there for age groups and just. Have the guys take the bucket over and do this and there's little tiny toys and I think we should do that again.
Parks and Rec is really overwhelmed right now, it's not full blown softball.
This is something Public Works can do and uh. Uh, they should have to.
So, what's the council's feeling about having two coffee vendors, Dutch Brothers and Starbucks? Because Lisa, Lisa sent me a note that if Starbucks can't do it or if they're going to resist. Uh, go to Dutch Brothers and I, and I thought, well, maybe both of them can do that. Maybe one of them can do uh, just black coffee and the other could do uh, makes uh. They, their mixed drink, whatever, I don't know, you know?
I would say if they wanted to sponsor the setup crew with those mobile, you know, I mean, and if there's leftovers, people could just have it for free, but I mean. I don't know about you guys, I like a big cup of joe and, and when I wanna get stuff done, it's.
So it's for the setup crew, not for?
Well, I mean, it's a donation for the whole, as a whole, if they wanna donate for the whole.
I could, I could break that into two pieces and have Starbucks do the setup crew. And Dutch Brothers have the, you know, go on when we, when we start our activity.
Well, what's wrong with them both being there, I mean, it's advertising for them, I mean, yeah, they giving away coffee, it's nice, but they're still advertising, we're here in town.
We'll do that, I'll start there.
Popular if we got Popeyes.
I mean, we might not get our local businesses someplace where we can be friendly and cheap with, you know, so people get to know them.
So the car show, I'd like to also bring over our city trucks. Move, we get the, we get the train over there? For trail, yeah, for June twenty fifth, it's just right there. For Corby Park, not to, not to ride, just to, alright, I wanna also get our uh. Our nineteen twenty nine touring truck over there for the car show. I will drive that over there personally by off field. It shouldn't still be at the mill, right? Is it still sort of?
Is that Public Works?
Is it?
Well, is the National Guard gonna show up again?
Did who check, they're supposed to check into that, it wasn't me?
No, uh, I can't remember, I don't have that on this list right here, but somebody was checking and they've confirmed.
Oh, cool, cause you, if nothing, you have to throw the kids in one of their aft racks and drive that around, you can love that.
But I just know that nineteen twenty nine rig is very cool, classic car, so, um, yeah, but that's coming up, I just wanted to um, give everybody a heads up. If you're having any troubles, reach out to Lisa, reach out to me and uh, it's gonna be what, ten days after our next meeting?
No, I'll call Stephanie's favor, cause they don't, haven't responded to me.
Okay, alright, alright, so uh, again, we are in those six.